Ready? We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call with the chair.
Sheriff Tommy Johnson, third president.
Rick Warren.
Marissa Treat.
Jason Lo.
Brian Munn.
Kristy Miller.
Miles Davis.
Larry Stein.
It was properly posted on the appropriate date. And Kristy, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. With the board's pleasure, we'll go ahead and go to item forty-six for a special presentation from the assessor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. If I could have all of the assessor employees that are here today stand up, please, so we could show you the kind of support we have for our friend and former colleague, Steve Storff. I'd like to read the resolution we created for him. Steve Storff's public service career with Oklahoma County extended forty-two years, starting October first, nineteen eighty-three. You can all sit down. Except for Steve. Except for Steve. Steve, would you come up to the microphone, please? In Steve's professional career, we're going back in time here, folks. He served five Oklahoma County assessors. George Keys, E. Melvin Porter, Mike Means, Leonard Sullivan, and me. And I appreciate his service very much. Over the last forty-two years, Steve Storff has well represented the Oklahoma County Assessor, and Oklahoma County's assessments grew during Steve's tenure from approximately two-hundred-and-forty-thousand parcels worth fourteen billion dollars to more than three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand parcels worth more than one-hundred-and-nine billion dollars. That's the kind of growth we've had. Therefore, be it resolved, the Oklahoma County Assessor's Office honors and recognizes Steve Storff for his amazing record of forty-two years of honorable service to Oklahoma, and wishes him a happy and well-earned retirement. We have all of our supervisors who assigned this, and we appreciate him very much. And I don't know if anybody ever will ever be able to attain forty-two years in county government ever again. And we're so happy that he was part of our-
Don't try it.
Yeah. And Steve, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you very much.
And we'd like to commemorate this with a picture, please, Steve. If you could remain up here, we'll get everybody out in front of the dais. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you indulging us. Now everybody can go back to work.
You want to make a motion on that agenda item?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve our agenda of item forty-six.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for Steve's long service. Now, we resume the agenda. Is there approval of the minutes for August twenty-first?
Approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you could push your button for me, please, Mr. Warren.
Any individual consideration on the consent agenda?
I just have a small, little comment. On item twenty-one, last month, we had a difference between the agenda item and the spreadsheet, and we promised to make sure that three cents was accounted for. And it is. And it is noted here today. So just want to make sure that everyone saw that we kept our commitment to make sure it went where it was supposed to go.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the consent docket?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then, to have our monthly financial report.
We'll be right back.
Good morning. For the August snapshot for the monthly financials, want to jump straight into it? For the general fund budget, your general fund reserve balance is eight million, one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. There's no pending transfers for today, so that number will not change. Excuse me. Moving on to page four, the general fund budget analysis. This will show your cash balance as the end of August. That's fifteen million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, one-hundred-and-four dollars. Looking at the comparisons compared to twenty-five fiscal year, revenue has increased about one percent, which is about a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. Jumping on over to employee benefits, looking at his cash as well. Cash as of the end of August was three million, six-hundred-and-sixty, or, excuse me, three million, six-hundred-and-forty thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Please tell me if I'm moving too fast. Okay. John Wilkerson will cover the medical and prescription claims for August as well. And then looking at the cash from twenty-five to twenty-six, I believe we are decreased in cash by fourteen percent. Dollars, that looks like one-point-two million dollars until the latter part of the fiscal year, when the property taxes are collected. Is when we'll see that increase later on. Jumping on over to the capital projects, we are continuing to change and clean up the capital project spreadsheet and trying to get that all back into our ERP system. The purple highlighted areas compared to July's capital projects presentation, you'll see those items have been reallocated to different categories. And then, the green line item is the item that was approved at last budget board for the six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for the courthouse flood that was included on there. And so, as of August, your unallocated funds, three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars for capital projects. And that will conclude this announcement. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I really like the highlights. When we're going through the first few pages that aren't highlighted, I'm searching all over trying to find the number. Could we do that every time?
I sure can.
That'd be great.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are no other questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This report compares claims paid through the end of August versus last fiscal year. If you remember, last fiscal year in July, UMR took over, starting paying medical claims. It took them a while to get ramped up. I think our first check register was in the middle of July. So when we compare medical compared to last fiscal year, we paid four more weeks or a month more claims because, you know, we're just in process of processing. UMR really didn't start ramping up until later in the fiscal year last year. So, we're about a million over, but we've paid a month's more of claims, so that makes sense. Over this fiscal year, it should all even out, for sure. Prescriptions are doing really well. We're nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand under. We've paid eight weeks versus nine weeks. So overall, we're about three percent, or a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. We're in budget. Plan's running very well.
Questions to Mr. Wilkerson? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're privileged to have with us today our jail trustee, Jim Holman. Would you like to come forward and introduce your new leadership, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're very pleased to announce our new trustee, or our new administrator for the jail, Timothy Kimery.
Thank you, sir, for filling in during this time of transition. You have a report?
I do. I'd be lying if I didn't say there's about a thousand other places I'd rather be than here this morning. So, with that being said, I've had about forty-eight hours to try to get my arms wrapped around the OCDC and everything that needs to be taken care of. But I just want you to know that I look forward to working with each of you going forward as we try to kind of right the ship and make sure that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money and do what we need to do as far as the budget is concerned. I do apologize, our CFO wasn't able to be here today. So, any questions regarding financials or the budget, I'm going to have to probably, if I can't answer it, I'll probably have to defer to C. on that. So, the first thing I want to do, one thing I want to address, I think is very critical. I've been over there for about three years. And I think we're at a point where we have to do something, obviously, about the pay, particularly the pay for our detention officers. I have a letter here. I put, we put packets in front of you, it's got a lot of information. Get time, we'd appreciate if you'd take a look at that. But I'd like to just read this letter into the record, if I may. My first official duty is to enter and jail administrator for Oklahoma County Detention Center. First thing I want to do is address the current salaries of our employees. Over the last three years, every CEO and administrator has requested a minimal pay increase for the men and women who are on the front lines of the criminal justice system. The request for an OCDC salary increase has become clear that continuing to underpay them has presented a significant opportunity for mistakes, unsafe conditions, a high turnover rate, employee fatigue, and failing to provide strong public safety to the citizens of this county, to the state, and to our country. It's essential that their compensation should reflect the hard work and dedication they perform daily and meets the standard of market value so they can have a decent life and provide for their families. The current take-home pay of an OCDC detention officer after all the taxes and fees is twenty-six hundred dollars a month. That's not a lot if he or she is trying to raise a family of four in the Oklahoma City metro area, where just the average rent is over a thousand dollars a month. As of twenty-twenty-three, the current median household income from Oklahoma City is sixty-seven thousand dollars. And for the entire state, it's over fifty thousand dollars. Our current rank-and-file employees are nowhere near this mark, which is, for me, it's embarrassing, to say the least, for what they do. The current job postings in Oklahoma for this position and other facilities are above the starting pay rate that we currently have, which is included with this proposal. It is crucial to ensure that our people are compensated fairly to be able to recruit and retain the best talent for this profession. And I submit to you this request with much urgency and extreme concern, respectfully, me. Let me just say that, and I'll show you some examples here in a second. But this is, for me personally, this is extremely important. For the last couple of years, I've been the training director. Before that, I was, I started off there as an investigator doing investigations. I have seen firsthand what the men and women have to go through over there. And I'll be honest with you, it's not pretty. Okay? And I know the sheriff knows this. It is a very much underappreciated job. And, you know, we have people right now that are obviously working overtime. We have people that are, after their shift, they are sleeping in their cars. And to me, again, that is just, that is, that's not acceptable. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation, and I want to go ahead and go ahead and get into that. Our first slide. This is just a couple of photos that, and we have hundreds of these. The first photo to the left there, that is one of the inmates that has one of our detention officers down, and he's beating the crap out of him. Okay? The other officer there sustained, well, you can see what he sustained. He sustained a beating. That particular officer has since resigned and moved on, which I don't know if I necessarily blame him. Next slide. This is another officer that had his finger bit severely, had his arm bit that required sutures and some tetanus shots. And again, this is, this happens not once a month, once a year. This happens every week, if not daily. This is what they're going through. Okay? Next slide, please. From July the first of twenty-twenty to July of twenty-twenty-five, there's been a hundred-and-ninety-nine terminations. Those are terminations. We've had a hundred-and-seventy-six resignations. So over the last five years, since the trust has been in existence, we've had over a thousand and seventy-five separations from our agency. We lose an average of two-hundred-and-fifteen employees per year. And I can tell you, from the detention officer's side, we cannot continue to sustain, we can't continue to sustain our operations, I'll be honest with you. We have kicked the can down the road as far as we can kick it. And we're at a stopping point. And we must do something. Our really bad things are going to, are going to happen to us. Some current salary examples. This is a redacted payment for one of our detention officers. You can see that that is exactly the amount that he is bringing home, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars. A month. That's not every two weeks. That's a month. And our people, it's hard for them to survive on that. Extremely hard. Next slide. These are some surrounding states. I pulled some quick numbers off, and again, I've had forty-eight hours to try and put this together. So, you can see, and those are actually in order, we put those in order. Colorado is the top pay. And this is starting pay. This is starting pay. The only person that we currently outdo, and we only outdo them by about fourteen hundred dollars or so, is Kansas. The Jayhawkers are a little worse shape than we are. Okay? All right. These are current Indeed jail job postings that I pulled off of Indeed yesterday. This is yesterday. Detention officer in Cleveland County, forty-two thousand, five ninety-eight a year. That's more than us. Remember, we have seventeen hundred inmates, over seventeen hundred. The Juvenile Detention Center, Oklahoma County Juvenile Justice Center, is paying their people starting forty-three thousand dollars. All right? Core Civic out at Watanga, which is currently closed, but they're advertising because the feds are fixing to open that up for ICE operations. Twenty-seven dollars an hour. Okay? That's roughly about fifty-two thousand dollars, I think if my math is correct. Okay, Rogers County, up at Clermont, three thousand, five oh nine seventy-two a month. That's forty-two thousand dollars. That's more than us. Midwest City, Oklahoma, they pay three-hundred-and-twenty dollars more a month for a jailer over there than us. Folks, we're at the bottom. We can't go any further. We're at the bottom. We require, before I go to this next slide, let me tell you something. I'll put our training up against anybody in this state. We have an eight-week, no one has an eight-week training academy in this state, except us. And we took that thing, and we revamped it, and we added, we put a lot of stuff into it. We require our people to be properly trained. And they are. And we base all of our training, and I got a lot of background in training. And we do a lot of scenario-based training. A lot. They get a lot of hands-on experience. And when they come out of there, they're ready to go. The problem we're having, matter of fact, we had one yesterday. I got an email last night from the HR director. One of our current cadets that's in the academy has resigned because Canadian County offered him more money and an immediate opportunity to go to CLIC, Council on Law and Education Training, who certifies our law enforcement officers in Oklahoma. Okay? We started with twenty-three, we're already down to seventeen in one week. If we graduate fifteen, I'll be extremely happy and surprised if we get to fifteen. You got to remember, we're losing, as a whole, two-hundred-and-sixty-two employees, okay? Every year. We can't sustain it. Last year, we had four academies that are eight weeks long. We had to. We didn't have people to be able to work in the jail. Well, that's exhausting for a trained staff. When you have eight weeks times four, which is thirty-two weeks, and then we have five mini academies for our regular staff to get them certified, and then we have two or three weeks of in-service training for the rest of our people, that left us was about, maybe, I think we had four weeks off last year. And my staff at the time was just exhausted and burned out.
How many more slides do you have here?
Just a couple. And I apologize.
We probably need to go along.
This is just, just for an example, this is Tulsa County. Their monthly pay's not up there, but they do something a little bit different. They have a lot of incentive pay, and they have shift differential. They pay for their education, things like that. You can see that. They also have a language stipend. Okay, next. This is just a proposal, our pay proposals, this is for detention officers only. When you get time, you can, you can look at that, but you can basically see that top one for a detention officer won forty-one, forty-one thousand. That's after they get out of the academy. We're proposing them to go up to about fifty, fifty thousand starting pay. We can, I think that's magic number to start getting people in here so that we can keep them and retain them. Our target is about three to five years. We can get three to five years out of them, I think we've hit a home run. Excellent. Again, this is our FY twenty-six total payroll benefits, around about thirty-point-two million. The pay increase for everybody over there would cost about three-point-four million a year. And so, again, next slide. The rest of the employees over there, anywhere from seven-point-five to fourteen-point-five percent increased, and that's all based off of current market value. And in summary, my whole point is that we need some help. We need your help. I can assure you that I will be keeping a very close eye on the money. And like I said, the most important thing for us, we want to make sure that we're spending the taxpayers' money appropriately. And that's what we're going to do going forward. So, again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'm willing to entertain any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Thank you for your service. I'd like to remind everybody that every one of the counties that you referenced in your report have a county-wide sales tax.
Yes, sir, they do.
In Tulsa County, the county sales tax is point-three-six-seven, and last year, they had a revenue stream of approximately four million dollars. That's used primarily for mental health and the operation of their jail, and then their maintenance of their jail. That's the difference. And in order for us to do something, the commissioners and so many citizens are talking about what's going to have to happen to be able to remedy the situation.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you being here.
All right. Thank you all.
And I know that you're new to the leadership, and I appreciate you stepping up and serving. Thank you for that. But I believe that we were not present at the BET for the discussion, so I believe we would welcome this conversation at the BET and like to invite you there. I know our chairman is behind you.
Yep. And I've talked to him, and I've assured him that going forward, we'll be at all of the BET meetings.
I do want to thank you. We all got, BET members got the email today with an eight-page document that were answering questions from July. I haven't looked at it yet, but-
Yes.
It's a great place to start, and I echo, I, please encourage you or some of your staff to be at the BET meetings.
Absolutely.
Where we can get this done.
Like I said, I will assure you that we will have representation there. And one of the first thing I did was take those forty-five questions that I didn't know existed, and we got those answered as soon as possible to get those out to you.
And also, I'd like to add, I've never met you before until today. Could you briefly just tell me a little bit about yourself?
Well, I've been around a long time, Commissioner. I come from the great town of Weewoka. So, I know you've heard a lot of stories about Seminole County, but I'm proud of Seminole County. Went to college down at East Central, played football down there for about four years. Come out of there with my bachelor's degree in history. Went to the highway, taught one year in the public school system. I was a school teacher at first, history, love history. And then I had an opportunity to get into law enforcement, went to the Highway Patrol Academy with Mr. Timmons, who was one of my classmates. And I spent twenty-one years there. I was also a reservist in the United States Navy after nine-eleven. I spent several years on active duty, worked at the Pentagon for several years. I worked at US CENTCOM down at, in Mobile Air Force Base in Florida. I was also instructor for the Marine Corps as a civilian. I've been to Afghanistan, it's been about a year and a half over there. And I've done all kinds of things. I've done everything from hauling hay to selling snow cones to briefing four-star generals and been to the White House a couple of times. So, kind of run the whole gambit, so to speak. I was hoping by, by turning sixty, that I'd be retired, be done with all this, but evidently, that didn't happen. So, that's kind of where I am in my life and career. I've got two beautiful granddaughters, and one is a competitive softball player down at Ada, playing for the Cougars. So, my time, my spare time, which is obviously not a lot, I try to get down there to watch her play softball. Thank you.
And I would also like to say that our office has been doing biweekly meetings with your team, and we very much appreciated that time, and we'll continue to partner with you guys in doing training on timekeeping. And then we're continuing to look at going to the bi-monthly pay. I know that's something that is also really important to your team and could be used as, also as a recruiting tool. So, we're going to continue to work on that as well, but appreciate that partnership.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am, thank you, appreciate it, thank y'all.
Sure, thank you. Okay, any motion for receiving that report? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Compton.
Good morning. We have a few changes to the watch list this month, uh, we actually have three items that were on the watch list last month that are no longer on the watch list. Uh, they are removed because they are either a recommendation out of the September supplement, uh, which would be the court clerk's um, uh, employees for nine months, uh, for a courtroom deputy, um, we had the employee benefits uh, on there for eight-hundred-and-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars, and there was an item for IT to transfer fifty-five thousand dollars for Microsoft three-sixty-five. Those three items are included in our September supplement. Um, on the employee benefits, uh, part of the eight-hundred-and-six-thousand-eight-forty is in the September supplement um, based upon an increase on employer premiums, and then we're also recommending an increase in employee premiums that make up that difference. So that's the reason why those three are uh, removed. The other items that still remain, uh, the CARES audit, that's still an ongoing process, uh, don't know if we're gonna have to pay anything on that, and if if there winds up being an amount owed, there may be other sources, uh, so we're just leaving that alone for now. Um, the court clerk has an item on there, we're tracking, uh, we may be able to pay for some of that or all of that out of other funds. And then the criminal justice authority item is still on here, uh, what was mentioned just a minute ago. We reached out, had several emails before several of our meetings, they were aware, uh, we'd invited them to come, we had, uh, they didn't show up, so we, we were not engaged in conversations on that, just due to absence. Um, so we will, if if they're, if they're willing and able to come and meet with us, uh, I think I can speak for all of us, we're all eager to have those conversations. Uh, but we can't have just a, a one-way conversation, it needs to be a two-way conversation. Uh, there's lots of things that were brought up on the presentation that I think are are important, and we can have those discussions in there. I do think it's important to point out, when we talk about juvenile, because juvenile is something that's part of our budget. You know, we talked for a long time about when the jail trust was established, one of the main priorities of doing that was that the trust would be able to establish other funding streams that the county could not do on its own. And to that point, juvenile has other funding streams, the state reimburses for a big portion of those costs. We still don't feel like they're, they necessarily fund exactly where uh, we, we think it should be, but it, it's a long ways further than what the, the trust has endeavored on uh, obtaining other um, funding sources. So hopefully, that is something that can be um, looked at and addressed in the future, uh, but that's really all I have on the watch list. I do have a suggestion, though, on the rest of the agenda, if you'll indulge me, maybe reordering a few of the items. The very next agenda item is a BET item to uh, present our recommendation on the supplement. I, I think it would probably be a little more efficient if you took up item forty before thirty-six, item forty is the revenues piece for the supplement, and that is reflective of the dollars that I will be speaking about in item thirty-six. So I think it would be appropriate to establish that that is the number that we're dealing with before we get into that. And then I, I would suggest that after thirty-six, we would move to item forty-four, which is the action on the September supplement dollars, that way we don't have the recommendation and then a big gap in the agenda, and I, I just think it would maybe be, allow for a little bit more fluid discussion if it was uh, ordered uh, such.
So the reason why it's um, here is because it's an update, we're not really taking action, I know we accept these reports, but um, to be consistent, you're really just providing an update now, and you're providing an update in thirty-six, we don't take action on thirty-six. Um, and it is consistent with agenda items for you to have an update, and then later in the agenda to have action items. Um, that is why that's placed that way, so the, the board can say that decision to change it, but there was a logical reason why that was put there.
Okay, yeah, in the past, um, and I'm saying we have.
Love, love in the past. Comments?
Yeah.
Continue.
So, well, there's been eight people sitting up here that have spent lots of time, you know, uh, very knowledgeable, and they felt like the process was sufficient in the past.
Appreciate it, I was just explaining why it was there.
Thirty-six is more than just an update, it is a recommendation on something. And traditionally, there's a, you know, a, a motion to receive that update, and then immediately following that is action on that particular item. So, the item that we're on right now, thirty-five, is just an update.
Right, so is item thirty-six, but the chairman obviously can do what he wants.
Okay, well, there's no action on item thirty-five, right? We're done with it?
Yes, sir.
Item thirty-six, is there something you wanna say about Chantel?
Yes, sir, on item thirty-six, on the attachment, there was a miscalculation in the correction, I have the corrected documents here. Um, I have not had a chance to um, inform Cody, so I apologize about that. Cody?
Is this the one oh five for the treasurer?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm aware of it.
Okay.
I've got notes.
These are the updated copies, I just wanna make sure you have a copy.
So do we, do we wanna take up thirty-six before you guys approve the revenues for the supplement? That would be item forty.
Well, we need to have a motion to receive this, I suppose, right?
Yes, motion to receive this.
Is that right?
I mean, we can, that's been consistent with the meeting.
Is there a second to receive this updated document? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board's pleasure on the order.
I have a request to explain with the team.
Anybody have a feeling about it?
It makes it official, I don't mind, let's whatever you.
I'm sorry. That, that would be my recommendation, because the the supplement recommendation of BET is giving, what I'm gonna be presenting is based upon dollars that are associated with item forty. If this board has an issue with those dollar amounts, then we're gonna need to make some adjustments, so it's just a, a recommendation, but.
Sure.
All right, so do we need to finish item with what we just received, is there anything we need to do?
That's thirty-six.
On thirty-six?
Really just have to decide if you're gonna take thirty-six now or jump down to forty, which, either way is fine, just explaining the purpose that it was there and what our office had put together.
Yeah.
That made logical sense.
I think we're on thirty-six, that's how we got here, so we need to probably have discussion, we don't wanna go to forty and come back to thirty-six, do you?
It's up to you.
I would, I would prefer if we just get the update on thirty-six. We're already talking about BET, we've talked about what was removed from BET, we're talking about the recommendations. I do understand your, your point that you have, Cody, um, but we're in the middle of what did you guys take off, what did you guys put on conversation? Um, so I do, and they're consistent with being updates. There's also changes that are being made that maybe we need to look at. Um, if we want to jump down to, to forty, to just go ahead and get that out of the way, to say we're all in agreement of what the number is, um, I would be comfortable with that. To forty, back to thirty-six of the mood, if everyone feels that that is logical, that's fine.
I just felt like from an order of operations standpoint, it made the most sense to handle that first.
And that does make the most sense, so let's follow that.
Okay, well, does somebody wanna make a motion on item forty?
Second.
Well, okay. We can just say we're on item forty, do you wanna make a motion about item forty?
Item forty is not my.
Yeah.
That's the clerk's side.
Yeah, if we're on number forty, then the most, motion is just to accept the supplement amount, that's here. So that's my motion, four-point-four million.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thirty-six.
Okay, um, since we've established the dollar amount we're looking at, which is the four-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-twenty-four dollars. Uh, BET had uh, some pretty exhaustive discussions related to these dollars. Uh, first of all, we split it up, kinda like we've done in uh, the, the recent years when we've had some one-time monies. This year, i- it's in the form of ARPA interest that we're anticipating getting this year. So of that four-point-four million dollars, one and a half million of that is expected revenue from ARPA interest, which is not something that we can count on in future years, so we're kind of booking those dollars a little bit different on our watch list, so that when we're considering future funding, we're not looking at future ongoing operations funding out of one-time dollars, because that could put us in a pickle down the road when we don't have those same revenue streams coming in, so it's kind of a, a tracking purpose. So what we're looking at is our, our recommendation of the four-point-four million dollars would be to put the one and a half million dollars from ARPA interest into the reserve, and on our watch list, we would add that into our uh, one-time uh, reserve dollars. Uh, that would leave a remaining amount of the four-point-four million, uh, of two-million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand and twenty-four dollars. Um, we, the recommendations that we have on here, uh, first of all, we're recommending an increase in general fund budgets uh, for elected official salary, uh, there is a statutory requirement that those numbers be adjusted annually uh, on July one, uh, we can't really do that on July one, because it's the serviceability piece, which is based upon the ad valorem uh, taxes and, and some other stuff, but those numbers aren't finalized until a considerable amount of time after July one, I mean, that's one of the biggest reasons why uh, we do the September supplement. So, uh, we can't really address that beginning July one, so what we're doing here is recommending funding it now, retro back to July one, that way we stay uh, compliant with state statute. Um, in that dollar amount, uh, the total is thirty-four thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the county audit, that is also a statutory requirement, since we're going up in our revenues, uh, the ad valorem piece of our revenues, we have to adjust the amount that we pay on the county audit, uh, that dollar amount is eighty-two thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, um, which um, is also part of our recommendation here. Uh, we're recommending uh, a, a transfer, uh, well, a, an increase in the court clerk's budget uh, to the tune of sixty-two thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that's for nine months of a new uh, courtroom employee uh, based upon the, the courts getting a, uh, an additional judge, uh, beginning, I believe, this month in September. Um, we are recommending a fifty-five thousand dollar amount uh, be moved into the IT general fund budget. Uh, that is for an increase in the Microsoft three-sixty-five account, uh, that is for a, a little bit of a security gap that there was a concern on. Uh, we have a recommendation of an increase uh, based upon uh, CPI, we, we had looked at what the Consumer Price Index was for July one, plus the half a percent that we were not able to get to our employees the previous year, which comes to three-point-two percent. Uh, those dollars are one-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, we're recommending including that as a, uh, an amount that would go into the general fund budgets, so that the elected officials would have those additional salary dollars to spend on their employees at their discretion. Uh, we have a recommendation of utilizing five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars of the total supplement dollars to uh, increase uh, the amount of employer premiums that are associated with the general fund budgets. And then uh, the remaining portion uh, would go into the um, into the reserve. Now, the difference that you were handed out there, I went, I just went through our recommendation. Uh, what you got was just a slight modification on the three-point-two percent on uh, salary adjustment on the treasures of general fund, there was a miscalculation at three-point-two percent. It was short by a hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents, so I, 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 I think I can speak for the group that, the recommendation on the three-point-two percent, I don't think a hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents would push anybody the other direction, but that is the change that you have in front of you, so that would increase the um, the amount going for employee salary adjustment up by a hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents, and adjust the reserve uh, balance by the, the same amount, the hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um, that would be starting the year. The reserve balance would be, let me get that here, ten-million-four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. Take away the hundred and five twenty-seven from that. Um, now, just keep in mind, of that ten-million-four-seventy-nine-six-thirty-nine, this board has already funded two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-twenty-four dollars and seventy cents for the increase contract for team. So with that contract done, if this board were to accept the BET recommendation, we would have in the reserve account ten-million-two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay. So no additional action on this, 'cause this is just the report for item thirty-six, the voting takes place later, but do you have discussion on this?
I do have one correction on what was just handed out, um, the ongoing funds to general fund reserve should have been lowered by the one oh five cents. Thus making the total of ongoing operations for supplement to be two-million-nine-fifty-two of them for, I just didn't get the other side of the changement.
Do we need to resubmit that then, with that correction?
I think we can read it into the record if we find.
Okay. Is there other discussion on the discussion?
If I could, I, I would like to thank Albert and Cassie, uh, specifically for all of their help. Uh, the board itself, uh, I think does amazing work, we have really, really good conversations, but um, Cassie and Albert, uh, you know, helping prepare the numbers in the spreadsheets, uh, but Cassie helping keep, keeping us moving forward, uh, keeping the trains going, she is a huge help, and I, I really appreciate uh, what she does, I just wanted to say that.
Okay, if nothing further on that, do you wanna do the Moody's report now?
Sure. And this is, will be super brief, I know we've had a really long meeting, um, and it'll probably just move to a reoccurring item, just to make sure we're consistently providing everyone with an update, um, for the FY twenty-four, um, we are still um, moving strong on that. We have a weekly meeting that includes all of our partners and the State Auditor's Office, um, and they have told us that they're um, still on track to complete by October thirty-first, um, which is great news, 'cause that keeps us to hit our deadline, so that we can get our final report over to Moody's. As some of you all may remember, we submitted our draft on June twenty-third, which also helped us keep our ratings, so we're in a good place there. Um, as this week, um, as, as many of you guys know, there was an additional call with Moody's related to the bond. Um, and so I have provided, and we can add this later to the agenda, but I have made sure to provide um, a copy of the questions that we did answer. Um, to Moody's for that, they will be doing another um, review. Uh, my understanding is they'll get back to us at the first of October, um, which could potentially have a change in our rating, um, which is uh, different than our deadline that we have for the FY twenty-four rating that we are expecting, so I just wanna make sure that we're all um, understanding that we've been working towards the FY twenty-four um, act for final report to solidify our rating, we are still doing that with the bond, they, Moody's, will be doing a review right now to assess our rating at the beginning of October. So, I don't want anyone to be surprised if we get a rating adjustment at the beginning of October, when I think most of us have been looking to see that that rating come the end of November. So, not good or bad, I just wanna make sure no one's surprised. Um, we will still get a follow-up from Moody's at the end of November, but just wanna make sure everybody knows, there'll be one earlier too. Um, so we'll get the immediate for October first timeframe, and then again, at the end of somewhere in November, Moody's will give us our FY twenty-five update, excuse me, twenty-four update. We are living live in FY twenty-five, um, and we are doing everything that we can, um, with. We are living live in FY twenty-five and we are doing everything that we can with, for the most part, really good partnership. We are struggling in a few areas to get everybody to kind of help us with timelines. It is important that we have timelines and that we know when different things are coming in from different offices so that we can all balance our time and, and manage our time because we all have projects. So we are doing that so that we can make sure that we are one hundred percent on time and that we're communicating with Moody's and with the state auditor, because sometimes the state auditor's timeline is a little bit different than Moody's timeline. And so I think having a plan in place and communicating and collaborating will be really beneficial for the entire county moving forward. So that's, that's all I have. No action.
Do we need to accept this?
Um, you can, yeah. Yes, we'll add it to the agenda.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that into the agenda item. Accept that Moody's discussion topic answers into the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you for that report. Are you wanting to do the employer rates or are you wanting to do item forty-four? Anybody have a feeling about it one way or the other? Let's just.
I think we say in order, forty-four is, this way we'll get a little discussion on it, so.
Okay. Item thirty-eight.
Okay. Item thirty-eight is an item that BET takes up every year and this board votes traditionally this time of year on the employee rates. We've got the employer rates on here as well for this next year so that we can make sure that we're funding general fund appropriately. What BET looked at was the average rate in, or average cost increases that our plan has had. John had provided us some information that it's, tracks at about a three percent increase. So we are recommending an increase in the employer premiums that would be retroed back to, to July one by three point six percent. The amount needed for that three point six percent for general fund budgets was included in the BET recommendation that I went over in item thirty-six.
Motion to approve. Second. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Companion item number thirty-nine?
Yes. Number thirty-nine is related to the employee rate premiums. BET is recommending an increase on those premiums at an, a, a three percent amount. You've got a sheet that's attached, not all of the line items are exactly three percent. Some are three point one, three point two, two nine, but it's roughly a three percent across the board. Single would go up by five dollars. The family plan would go up by twelve dollars. This is something that we discussed last year and then again this year, just trying to get our employees used to a little bit of a change annually in that. That way we don't, you know, just hold the rates, hold the rates, hold the rates, hold the rates for seven, eight, nine years, and then all of a sudden we realize we've got to make an adjustment here and we're having to make a thirty or a forty percent change in one year. So thi- this way we can kind of slowly ease into it. Everybody can anticipate when you're looking at budgeting, you know, are you gonna, you know, buy a different car? Are you gonna, you know, change your internet plan? Whatever it is, you kind of know, okay, when we're budgeting that our, our insurance premiums are going to go up by about this amount each year and so that they can pre-plan for those expenses.
Motion to approve.
Now, this one would go into effect January one, and it's important that we do this one now because these dollar amounts need to be on the forms that are sent out for open enrollment in November.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've taken action on item forty, forty-one.
Sure. Forty-one is just a standard transfer. It's part of our approved budget. It's just moving over the monthly CJA premiums into employee benefits.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, this is just a regular transfer item. This is part of our budget, part of the money that was budgeted into employee benefits is just to move it over.
Motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Then our legal shield renewal.
Legal shield standard renewal, no price change. This is for the identity protection program. Just ask for your approval.
I do have a question.
Sure.
On your legal shield, how much does that cost?
It costs four dollars an employee. We're seventy-two thousand dollars a year. They're the biggest identity protection and credit protection agency. And kind of a little history on that is we had some data breaches several years ago, so we implemented that as a safe protection for the employees since their data was breached.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, forty-four.
I'd like to ask Chantel to come up to go over the two options.
Item forty-four also has replacement documents. Option B represents the recommendation that BET presented today, and you have that attachment. Option A is regarding a second recommendation without the three point two salary adjustment, and I have that attachment represented here, and I'd like to pass that out if that's okay.
Is there a motion to receive this?
Motion to receive.
Second.
Are you providing a magnifying glass so we can see this? All in favor, say aye.
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 I just want to make clear, I, I know Chantel didn't mean this, but when she said the, the recommendation without the three point two percent, there is no recommendation without the three point two percent. So BET discussed and, and that actually failed, so the only recommendation from BET includes the three point two percent. I just want to make sure we're clear.
I appreciate and understand why you said that. I think in writing it says all BET recommendations, so I, I think it was just, it has everything that you guys had minus the salary is, I think it was just worded straight, but I understand why you corrected it. I just wanted to make sure you knew if that's what it said on the agenda.
Apologies for the confusion, but those are the two different differences in the options and happy to answer any questions.
And I apologize for interrupting Christine, just in voting, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve option A.
I'd like to make a motion to approve option B. Okay, well.
Do one at a time.
One motion at a time. Is there a second for option A? All second. Is there any in favor, say aye. All those opposed. Can we have some discussion about that?
Sure.
What is, what does option A do differently than option B?
Option A has all the recommendations that BET laid out earlier that Cody went over minus the salary adjustment. So everything, Kayla, Kayla, excuse me, Cody, sorry, went over minus the salary adjustment. That's all that option A is. The total's still the same at the end, but instead of those funds going into the salary increase, it will go back into reserve. And so we'll be saving that money for future expenses possibly and potentially future raises, but at this time, I think it's responsible for us to continue to put money in reserve as we have unexpected expenses and expected expenses with the old jail, new jail, VOCC, the elevators, all sorts of things. So this is just my motion and you're free to, so no one.
And option B?
That's all of them, yes.
So A is, A is no raise for the employees, B is?
Yes, sir.
Elected to.
The, the elected has to be included because of the law.
Yes.
Otherwise it would have been come out. But because of the law, we have to include it.
I just want to reiterate, when, when you mentioned raises, we were looking at it not that you have to institute it as a COLA, but that it is based upon COLA principles. It would not be, we're not looking at giving raises. We don't have the funds to give raises. It's just keep employees at the same spending level they were the year before. And I, I think, you know, we've had discussions about the jail and the five hundred million dollar balance, but this one point five million dollars, if we didn't pay, if we didn't allow our employees to stay at the same cost of living and save this one point five million dollars to put into the jail, we're going to have to do that for three hundred and thirty-three years to be able to make up that five hundred million dollars. And based upon the, the cost changes, it's gonna, it would be even more than the three hundred and thirty-three years. Now, I, I get that my three hundred and thirty-three doesn't include compounding interest, so we would probably scale back down from three hundred and thirty-three years, but, I mean, it's point three percent of the deficiency balance, not three percent, point three percent, I mean. So I think that's kind of where BET was coming from on that.
Is there any other discussion? So if we vote aye on this item forty-four, we are adopting A instead of B? Is that correct?
There'll be two votes. This is just for A, and then I believe that Mr. Warren will have a motion for B, so you'll get a chance to vote on B. You're voting on them one at a time.
But if we vote on A and approve it, then we don't have the option of voting on B?
Well, correct.
So someone would make a motion to table A?
I think we should vote A, and basically, e- either you want to give a raise and basically that ra- that money can go into your account, into you, each one of us. We can decide if it's going to be a merit raise or straight raise, how it's going to be done, but at least the employees have an option there to get a pay increase based on the cost of living.
And if you don't want to spend it, it can always lapse back into general fund at the end of the fiscal year, or it can be transferred back from your budget into general fund reserve at a later meeting.
Can you transfer those funds to highway cash?
No. No, but the way the highway districts do their budgets, it's a split. So, I mean, you can, you can look at how you offset your expenditures, but, but no, you can't transfer dollars from general fund over into highway cash, but there are certain expenses that you have that you fund in general fund that can be funded out of highway cash.
And I think also kind of along that same line, this would just be for employees that are paid out of general fund. So if you have employees who are paid out of other funds, you would have to come up with the budget in all those other areas. So this corrected only goes to general fund employees.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
It's not actually across the board unless your office has the ability to pull money from those additional funds to pay those employees.
Correct. And that's part of the analysis that BET does every year. We didn't have that specific discussion this year because we've had that, everybody around the table's been there for a long time and they all know that they, they're the ones that have the special revenue accounts or the elected official offices around the table. And so they're, of that understanding, when they're recommending a three point two percent for general fund, that they're going to have to absorb that on their cash accounts.
Yes, yeah. I just think it's an important point because I don't know that everyone realizes that it's not technically across the board, all employees, specifically for general.
Which includes that it's not the jail trust employees also, as was mentioned.
Yes, it does not include the jail trust employees. They are funded via contract from general fund. They're not county employees.
I get that, but I'm just clarifying.
Right, yeah.
Does not include them.
Yeah, we've, we invited them to come and have conversations and, and see what, what would be their pleasure. And like I mentioned earlier, I traded emails, but when I did not give an absolute what question is going to be asked, I said, I, I can't, I can't tell you exactly what's going to be asked. I could tell you what, me sitting here right now, what I think I would ask, but I can't guarantee what my follow-up questions would be because I don't know what your answers are, and I'm only one of nine people sitting around that table, so I can't speak to what their questions would be. And then we had no shows, so.
When, when, when was item, or option A presented to the BET?
Option A was never presented to BET.
So the BET has had a vote on option B, is that correct?
Option B is the BET recommendation, yes, sir.
The points were discussed.
The points were discussed and the, and BET by a six to two vote chose to include the three point two percent CPI-based salary adjustment for general fund accounts.
When was this item presented?
It was my agenda item. And so we include, I wanted to include two options, so we made sure that.
So we haven't had any discussion at BET about this particular plan, just this other one?
Well, I think there was a lot of discussion about the salary, and I feel like Cody's done a really good job explaining all the discussions around the pros and cons of this. This is just, in my mind, simply an, an opportunity for us to vote on option A or option B, either with, we all feel, we have different feelings on this and we feel like, yes, we need to do the salary increase right now, or no, we don't. I think that's really, it's just giving the budget board that ability to, to have that option. BET does a great job in recommendations, but we're the ones that have to make these decisions.
We're talking about a lot of money, and I, I really, really don't like having to have options presented to us late notice. I know that they may have been talked in, in the general terms, but I'd prefer to have a whole lot more discussion on these things than having an option A presented to me day of the event. I've, I'm, I'm, obviously there's an agenda item, but I, this is, this isn't the kind of stuff that's vetted by our groups.
Well, I, I mean, I respectfully disagree because it seems that that's what BET spent a lot of time doing was discussing all of these things, including the salary and the employee premiums. I mean, that's what you guys spent a ton of time doing is having this discussion. So this, to me, is still a part of that discussion. It's just saying that I may not agree with every single recommendation that BET had, and so I felt like it was fair for the board to have the ability to decide on this one. Anybody could have put an agenda item up that had removed other recommendations from BET that were discussed there. And our agenda items, not only are we legally have to have them out 24 hours in advance, but we send drafts out too, so I'm, I'm sorry if it was a surprise.
But drafts change, drafts change a lot. And we can never take away the elected official's ability to bring something here to.
Sure.
I mean, we're the ultimate say, and it was debated in BET. That's why I seconded the motion. Is there any other discussion?
Cody, can you tell me the last time the employees got a pay raise?
A pay raise?
Or this COLA adjustment, let's call, the semantics being semantics, when's the last increase that got to their bottom line?
Well, it's, it's not semantics.
It's either last year or it's not. Well, did they get a pay increase last year?
They got a COLA-based adjustment that didn't.
And then what about the year before that?
That didn't even quite meet to the, the actual CPI.
I got it.
We, we have, we have.
What about the year before that?
We have instituted a COLA-based salary adjustment for probably five or six years, maybe seven years.
Which total's about, what, a million, two to a million and a half a year?
So I guess we're five years into our three hundred and thirty-three years.
So actually that five would be that compound, you know, or, you know, Albert Einstein, smart guy, said the strongest force in the world is compounding interest. Five hundred million dollars for a jail.
So what, what's, what's compounding interest on one and a half million dollars over five years? How close are we to the five hundred million?
Well, we've, I mean, you look at it right now, five years, five and a half million, that's seven and a half million dollars worth of bonding space. Seven and a half million.
Okay, so seven, so we're talking a hundred years.
So over thirty years, we just did ten percent. Ten percent. Now, if we would have been responding, let's go back to five years before that. I think there was one year that we missed. Let's go to five years before. There's fifteen.
No, we didn't, we didn't do them. There was like, before we instituted the COLAs, there was like twelve years before there was ever a change at all. That's the reason why we started doing the COLA adjustment was because kind of like the, the discussion on the employee premiums, we had to do, you know, if we don't do anything, we're going to get to the point where we have to do a thirty percent increase on their employee premiums because we haven't been diligent to, to keep that up to date. If we don't do anything on COLAs, we're going to be in the same boat. We're going to be six or seven years down the road and we're going to be looking at a thirty or forty percent number instead. So it, it's biting a, a small piece at a time to make sure that our county employees that are paying more for milk, more for gas, more for everything this year than they were the year before, CPI for July, year over year, was two point seven percent. Last year, we, we tried to be conservative and we missed the, the full CPI amount by a half a percent, so we included that half a percent that was lost by our employees' last fist. So we included that half a percent that was lost by our employees' last fiscal year. We included that into the two point seven percent to get to the three point two so that our employees' buying and spending power doesn't change negatively. Because at the end of the day, we can't just put building the jail on the backs of county employees. It's the responsibility of the community as a whole and not just building it on the backs of our employees.
Now, that's going to be the next point. I, I appreciate exactly what you're doing. I, I fully understand that, and by asking us to continuously stretch our budget over and over and over again as we are being asked to do is irreprehensible. It's time, yes, that one, we as a budget board, look at our own belts and start tightening them, and we have extensively. I, I believe that Oklahoma County does more with less and any, and does it better than anybody else in the state. But we have to start looking at funding a jail and start trying to nickel and dime trying to fund the jail. So I appreciate what you've done. I know we kind of went around about to get there, but thank you for all your hard work, and I, I believe that, yes, our employees are our greatest asset. I believe that we should protect them. I am upset that there's not a pay increase for the jail because that's, that's a dire need. But that's something that we can, and it sounds like you are going to continue to reexamine, and I appreciate that. But we've got to do something about that. Now, with that, if you want to press the motion.
We have a motion.
I do have one comment. I do want to remind the board that last year BET brought a recommendation during the same time in September last year that would have put over eight million dollars into that new jail fund, and this board chose not to do that. They put it in reserve.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
No.
The noes have it. Is there another motion?
Motion for option B.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No.
No.
Okay, option B passes.
Thank you.
Hey, Cody, real quick to Christie's point, is there going to be another recommendation by BET to look at the lockbox type option? That she just mentioned eight million dollars last year.
I, I mean, we can, we can look at that. I mean, we, we're told all the time about tightening our belts, but I, I, I get the feeling at the county that we're really not tightening a belt. We have a tourniquet on, and we're getting ready to lose consciousness due to lack of blood, blood flow. I mean, we've tightened and tightened and tightened and tightened and tightened. Doesn't mean that we can't continue to have conversations and look to see if there's, you know, certain areas here and there. And I've often said, you know, coming up, can we find two or three hundred thousand dollars or, you know, five hundred thousand dollars? Well, maybe, but we're not finding twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, eighty million dollars. We're just not finding that. It's just not there.
You guys continuously have those discussions like monthly, right?
I think I was having a conversation with somebody about eleven thirty last night. I mean, we, we have ongoing conversations constantly about this stuff, yes. And I do appreciate everybody, every budget board member's appointee to BET. I think we have a really, really good group. My request, when, when I was asked to chair eleven years ago, was that we would have robust discussion, but nobody's standing on the table yelling and screaming and pounding, and nobody's sitting at the table on their hands being absolutely silent. And we've done a really good job having really good, respectful, professional, robust discussion. I think it is a very, very good group, and it's because of everybody that you guys have appointed. I really appreciate all their work and you guys allowing them to take time out of their busy schedules because this is something that's above and beyond what their actual jobs are. So I, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Thank you. As a person that sat on that, when this, when the discussions weren't so civil, I appreciate the, the long hours that you guys put in there. Christie is, and yourself, and you guys do yeoman's work. You guys watch this down to the penny. You guys are financially responsible, and, and quite honestly, you're the ones that, that keep us out of the most trouble. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you. Christie is awesome.
Yes, she is.
I do as well, and I, I want to say too that I echo what Commissioner Davidson's saying about, we've got to do something about the jail trust employees. And I am grateful that the new leadership is willing to come to the table and have those discussions. But they may be a technical separate entity, but they are helping us perform one of our constitutional duties, and we have absolutely got to not shirk in that responsibility, and we can't leave them behind. And that was part of my reasoning for, for the other on this, is just to hold the line because we, until I am for a tax, I'm for a proposal that will hopefully have this spring, and it's absolutely essential. I don't dispute that with what anything that was said, but until which time we get it, it is the tourniquet, it is the being forced to do even more with less. I was involved in conversations with community leaders yesterday and the day before, and in the day before that, and trying to lobby and persuade and ask for support for an upcoming initiative for us to bring before the voters. But in the meantime, if this is all we've got, then I'm just looking at where a little for them is something versus nothing. And then I get it isn't very much for our employees, and I, I agree, they're the greatest asset, and they, they all, the BET is getting celebrated, but frankly, all of our employees keep us out of trouble all the time. They're all first responders, they're all public servants, they're all involved in mostly constitutionally required activities that are thrust upon us, including an unfunded new judge that the Supreme Court's handing down to us, and that's one of the items that we had to vote on. To me, that's just not an option. It's a Supreme Court mandate that we have to staff that new courtroom. And so I get all that, but I just, I wanted to be clear, mine's not to be spiteful about it, it's just to say, I'm sure, there's very few things we get to pick and choose that are, are elective. Most of these things we're talking about are forced upon us, and we just can't continue to spend what we don't have an option, and as much as we may feel like they deserve it, and I certainly do, we just don't have to. These things that we talked about with the Supreme Court mandate of a new courtroom, we have to do. That's why I did what I did.
I do, I do think it's important to note, though, that maybe I'm missing a year, but to my knowledge, the jail trust has lapsed dollars every single year since they've been in existence, and those lapsed dollars stay with them instead of coming back to the county to be able to be reallocated moving forward. When the sheriff's office used to run the jail, they were in the same boat. I've had conversations with folks that were in leadership over there at the time, the two hundred and fifteen, you know, employees that, you know, that he was talking about earlier, that they go through, that, that's, that's no different than when the sheriff was running it. It, the turnover, it, it was the same. I mean, it, it was the same. But the difference was when the sheriff, when they were, when the sheriff's office was running it, and they would have a million dollars, a million and a half, two million dollars that they didn't spend because they didn't have all the employees they were budgeted for, those dollars came back here, and you took that money and built it into the next year to be able to be budgeted. We're not doing that here. They just take the same money that we gave them the previous year, plus the money that they didn't need to spend or couldn't spend the previous year to add on top for their budget this year. We don't pull those dollars back, nor do we look at and say, well, you only spent this, so we're only going to budget you for that. We still give them the same budget even if they didn't spend it all, so.
And I don't dispute turnover was relatively the same. I thought of that when that statistic was mentioned. But pay was an issue then, pay is an issue ever a bit more now because inflation, as we all know, has gotten out of control. And I think the other point is, is that the DA has always cautioned us about having ongoing routine expenses predicated on special or one-time revenue. And you can't, it's irresponsible to hand down what would be permanent raises off of just leftover discretionary dollars to gobble up right before the end of the fiscal year.
Sure, but they can do stipends. They can do stipends, though.
Right, and, well, they could, but it leaves maybe an expectation that that's going to be there again and again and again.
Well, back when we were first talking about ARPA dollars, we had given the jail cares dollars, and they were paying employees. We didn't call it, we were calling it hazard duty, and then we're calling it something else, but it was basically hazard duty. And then when we got ARPA money, we did that for our employees. And I had had a conversation with the, with the trust chairman at the time and said, you guys should come to BET and ask for those dollars as stipends like you did with the cares dollars. And they never, they never came and never asked. So we have tried to have these conversations and tried to come up with solutions, but it is either not showing up or not actually, you know, saying, oh, yeah, that is a great idea, we need to do that, and then it just never happens.
How much did they lapse June thirty?
I don't know this year. The previous year, we were told they were going to be in the hole like two and a half million dollars, and they lapsed close to two million. We were told they weren't going to lapse any this year. I, I've heard that they lapsed over a million dollars, but I don't know that for sure because I've not seen anything concrete. But other than this year, a- and like I said, I've heard that they lapsed. I don't know that for sure. They have not been at our meetings. But I know every other year, there's been lapsed dollars in, in salaries that, that, I mean, one year, they gave significant raises and reduced the FTE count that we had budgeted them for and just arbitrarily decided to drop their FTE count to increase their pay. I mean, they've made those kind of arbitrary decisions on their own in the past. I mean, that's not unprecedented, and I would anticipate, I mean, if they, if they can go out and find other revenue streams, then they can look at that, those types of scenarios to be able to allocate other dollars, so anyway.
I, I would like to add as well that, you know, obviously, pay is always going to be an issue regardless. And I'm concerned that the jail employees are not receiving the rates. I mean, they do a good job over there. They do the best that they can. But I do disagree with you as far as, I think there was a major difference when the sheriff ran the jail. Based on the fact that those employees right now believe that they have a job. They don't believe it's a career. And when I was practicing law readily over there, those employees, you know, when they worked for the jail or worked for the sheriff, they were like, hey, you know, one day I'm going to become a deputy. And they had a path. Right now, they don't believe they have a path. So I think, you know, I'm not trying to put pressure on this, on the sheriff at all. But I do believe that a sheriff running the Oklahoma County Jail is the best move forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I wasn't speaking to whether the, who was doing it better. I was just saying that the numbers from a turnover standpoint were, were pretty much the same. I, I do get the point about the other, but if you look at any reputable study out there, job pay is not the driver on whether people stay or leave employment. You can look at any reputable study, that is not it. I'm not saying that it's not part of the equation. I'm not saying we shouldn't do everything we can to increase that. We absolutely can, but it is never the main driver. There's other things that need to happen, and we've had those discussions, and it's just never really wanting to look at that. When they did their, their FTE adjustment and increased pay, I mean, it was a huge increase. I mean, Chrissy, Miles, you guys were both on the board side. You guys remember that, right? I mean, it was a huge increase. And you look that next month after they gave that increase, their FTEs, it stayed steady from the year, from the month before. And then after that, it was a precipitous decline, month after month after month after month after month after month. They increased pay, and they lost more employees than what they had before. So I mean, it's just, it is not the, oh, it, it, it's not the magic bullet. There's, it's part of an equation that needs to be addressed, but there's other things that need to be addressed i- if, if we want to have a holistic approach to actually fix it.
Cody, what is the starting pay?
I, I don't know what it is currently.
He just told us.
Twenty-six hundred and ten dollars a month. Two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
That's your pay comp. That comes from thirty-one thousand, two hundred a year.
It's forty thousand.
Forty thousand, eight hundred.
That's the starting pay for a jail. He mentioned what it was after taxes.
Yeah.
He said taxes, yeah, he was comparing apples to oranges. The other, he was showing us their actual pay, which is like forty.
Well, he mentioned the actual pay being twenty-six hundred and ten dollars, but the forty thousand dollars is the actual pay.
So their pay would be, because you have, but we all like to pay taxes. Yeah, but when he listed all of them, and we were next to last, those included taxes.
The twenty-six hundred included taxes?
No, he listed this as forty thousand.
Annual salary.
Forty thousand, eight hundred.
But we have a tendency to get conflicting numbers when they do present stuff to us. So a- and that's kind of part of the problem. I, I mean, I can look at the document that was presented, but I just, I, I can't say what, whether those are accurate or not. I just, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm hopeful that there's going to be a, a very good change. I know Mr. Holman and others that have recently been additions to the jail trust are very financially savvy and are digging into it and have set us on a, on a good course, and I look forward to the conversations that you guys have at BET because I think the information that you guys have sought for years, I think will come to light, and we'll actually have some, some resolution soon.
Yeah, well, and I've heard that, you know, they may not want to come because they feel like it's a gotcha game, but it's not. I mean, if you look back at meetings when they have been there, we ask the same exact questions pretty much every single time. And there may be different follow-ups, but it's, it is just, a- all we want is them to understand their finances and present accurate information and be open to suggestions and, you know, working back and forth. That's, that's what we need, so.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Holman, for staying here for this whole discussion. I'm sure you took, taken note. Okay, item forty-five.
Yes, this is for, really, for me to be consistent when I first was elected to move the ARPA interest over into the new jail fund. So I'd like to make a motion to move the one point five ARPA interest into the new jail fund.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? I will second. Any discussion? What we're doing is putting it into a different account where we won't be able to have access to it. We don't have enough reserves to be able to take that much money and put it in an account where we won't have access to be able to accommodate the needs and the emergency problems that come up with, with such a low balance to be able to transfer to the next year. So I urge everybody to vote against this. Might have been an argument from my vote no on my previous discussion, but go ahead.
This item was actually discussed in BET. It is not requested by us because this was not a recommendation. It was voted down. It was, we, we chose for our recommendation to leave it in the reserve. It can be moved at any time.
It was my request.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that we actually had the conversation and, and vetted it, vetted this particular item.
It was, it was my item. Thank you.
Thank you.
These are one-time funds also, so they're not part of considering for routine expenses, and I think that we've got an extraordinary task ahead of us with this jail, as we've been mentioning, so that's the reason. Go ahead.
I was just going to add, add that this will still leave over seven million of one-time money in this. Over seven million.
And I believe this also includes what the sheriff gave back last year or two. And to the one point five, the full amount that the sheriff gave back.
It's a good gesture to show the public when we're getting ready to go ask them for money to, that we've taken seriously this task. And I think this would be a great show of faith from our budget board.
And, and back in May of twenty twenty-three, we had all had a very thoughtful conversation about the importance of saving and the importance of putting money into this bucket for the point that you just made, Brian, and to get us prepared for the day that comes when we're having to build the jail, do the operations. It's not going to cover all of it, but just continuing to put money in there to make sure we can show that we're trying to build towards taking care of those responsibilities that we have.
Any other discussion?
You know what's in that account now?
I do not know the total. Chantel, do you know the total? We don't, but we can get, we can email that back. That's a great question.
Anything further? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four, four. Motion fails. Okay. Is there any citizen participation? No one signed up. No one's appearing. Any board comments? Don't come.
I'd like to thank BET and Cody for all their hard work.
I do. So on the screen is, and I will get emotional talking about it, so I'm going to apologize now, but this is the Minko. but this is the Minko softball team that had a bus accident last, um, Monday. And they're all alive. And if you, um, sorry, if you are familiar with the situation, the girls were coming back from a softball game, um, when a deer hit the bus and a piece of the front of the bus kind of got caught up and then the driver wasn't able to control the, the steering wheel. And then the bus rolled several times. Several of the girls, um, flew out of the bus, some went to barbed wire, some of the girls and coaches rolled with the bus. Um, and it is just beyond a miracle that they are all alive. There's clearly a lot of injuries, there's some broken backs, there's a lot of different things. Um, and a lot of you all know that my oldest goes to Minko. And, um, I always appreciate people asking me how, I'm so sorry, how Mason is, and he's doing great. Um, his girlfriend was on the bus. The last Monday was very traumatic for everybody in the world. There was a lot last week, it was a heavy week. But Monday night, when we received that phone call, it really brought a lot of trauma back to our entire family. And my son was at the football field, so very close to where the bus accident was. There were, every, everyone showed up. Um, I got, I actually happened to get a, a recording, a copy of the recording of the 911 call that Taitlin bossed my son's girlfriend made on the bus. It is amazing. She was so calm, we should use it in training. She was steady, she knew exactly where she was, she gave the direction. It was the most impressive phone call I've ever heard. I certainly would have not been that calm, but she was able to help her teammates, she was able to give direction. There were game wardens there, OHP, every county there, every law enforcement, volunteer firefighter, I mean, everyone showed up. And I know the news reports that you have seen, um, the officers have said, if everyone hadn't have showed up and all those first responders had not been there, they would not have been able to get every single person to the hospital and get them care immediately. So I just, I just want to say thank you to all, everybody that showed up. And as you guys are remembering, um, you know, this situation, please pray for the girls that flew out of the bus, those that were in the bus and those that were behind it. There were several parents that were driving behind the bus and they had girls in the car. And so they watched their teammates literally fly out of this bus. So while our, our main focus is healing, um, especially for Coach Binge, he is still in the hospital. Um, all, again, all the other girls and the other coaches are home, but there's still a lot of healing. So please pray for physical healing, but please also remember, remember that mental health healing, mental health is very real when you're going through a trauma like this, whether you were the one that was injured or you, you witnessed it. So, um, I just wanted to, to take a moment and say thank you to all public, um, all first responders and ask that you continue to keep this, um, community in your prayers.
Where's the money? I imagine that's what most people are asking, where is, where are the tax dollars that they pay that helps the county cover these expenses? And the problem that we have is we have a legislature and many legislators at the Capitol who have passed exemption after exemption after exemption without regard for what happens at the local level. And the county of Oklahoma County has absorbed substantial losses over the last 24 years. 181 million dollars of unreimbursed exemptions. And this last year, nearly 30 million dollars in unreimbursed exemptions the state gives out. Now they're talking in the legislature about eliminating property taxes altogether. These are all issues that we all, every county elected official across the state needs to be aware of. Because you can talk about emergencies and that's one of them, but the first first responders are county government across the state. And the legislature is heading down a very interesting path and their rhetoric will have to run up against the reality and the responsibility of funding state government and allowing governments to thrive because for the majority of Oklahomans, the only government they have is county government.
Okay, any new business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
No movement.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.